All right. We're going to call the city commission meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Roll call, Al.
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City manager Leon.
Here.
City attorney Denherter.
Here.
I want you all to know how hard it is not to turn my mic on and answer after Commissioner Minor. Many years of practice, so that's thrown me off a little bit. All right, moving on to in our agenda. I need an approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of May 10.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Al, you're going to have to help me learn here. Can we do a group vote?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And any abstaining. All right, minutes are approved. We'll move on to City manager Leon's report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Moser, members of the commission, and members of the public here at the meeting this evening. Just a few things, and I'll try to be quick because I know you have a long agenda before you. You can mask if you want to, or you don't have to according to the school district policy if you've been vaccinated. So we're going on the honor system here, but everyone's welcome to. We do have masks available if people want to wear them, but if you're comfortable not wearing one, you can do that. Along with that, you don't have to give me feedback this evening, but if folks are comfortable, my thought would be that we'd be ready to move our chairs back in our normal configuration and place our microphones accordingly. I'll need to have that discussion with IT and Dwayne Johnson regarding that scheduling, but I think that we could probably get that in within the next couple of weeks. So if you just want to let me know what your thoughts are about sitting next to each other again, I think it'd be good for us to get back to how we started. And if we need to later on in the year or in the future separate again, we'll do that and we'll know how we can handle those types of things. If you will, check your calendars and get back to me. I'll reach out to you all individually. I'm looking at putting together a request for proposals for a strategic planning advance with the city commission on Friday, October 22, and we would handle the department heads on Thursday, October 21. I realize that's a long way out. I needed a day that we could work with schedules, I guess, in advance, and I've reached out to a couple of you that that timeframe and that particular day probably works good, works well, excuse me. So if you'll let me know, I won't send out an RFP until I hear from you all that you can make it. But really, our strategic plan took us through 2021, and I feel like it's time to revisit that and look at strategies and have that time where we can just freewheel discussion and talk about all things in the future that you might want to see in our community. Adam Haberman is here, and I asked him if he would give you an up-to-date, up-to-the-hour construction update on the Huether Family Aquatics Center.
Like as of 7:04 PM?
Like as of when I drove here this evening, there were lifeguards in the pool, and I thought, good sign. But not sod, bad sign. And I just knew he would be able to deliver the update without a lot of emotion in his voice, which I'm unable. So Mr. Haberman, could you let the commission know where we stand?
Good evening. The city manager is correct. There is bodies in the pool, which means there's...
Legally and floating, right?
Yes. A lot of activity taking place on the site in the last couple of weeks. They were scheduled to do sod this morning, to start sodding this morning in the areas that need sod. And due to the little bit of rain we got, they decided to hold off, and they're going to give it a try tomorrow morning. So hopefully tomorrow morning, if they start sodding, that'll really change the landscape even more than it's changed in the last two weeks. The interior landscaping's pretty well complete. They have obviously some touch-ups they'll have to do with them, but they put in just about 90 trees, a couple hundred shrubs and grasses and bushes, and so they've been rather busy getting those planted. The concessions area, there was a lot of equipment delivered last week, and there was food delivered. There's the paper products have been delivered for that building, for their concession area. The bathrooms are pretty much complete. They're working on final details, like putting the room identification plaques up next to the doors and things like that, so not much left there. Mechanical building, the pool contractors are still working through some of the things with the operations of the pumps and the chemical feeds, and they've been working with city staff to train them and get them familiar with that. So far, nothing too major has gone wrong. The pumps are operating, the filters are operating. The pools are heated. The water was 84 degrees today in the competition pool and 86 degrees in the zero-depth entry in Lazy River. Last week, there was a person here that was riding the slides, making sure that they're tuned right, safe to ride on, adjusting the spray features in the zero-depth play features and getting those all tuned in. So yeah, there's been a lot of activity up there and putting the finishing touches on. The parking lot, the paving contractor needs to seal the joints in the parking lot, and then the city crews will come in and paint the stripes. So we're hoping they get that done fairly quick so we can get in there and stripe it. But yeah, it's coming together, so.
If I could ask two questions. One, I heard a rumor this weekend that somebody said only the pool will be open on Monday. None of the other stuff? Is that, would there be any truth to that? If we're opening as planned, everything in the water park would be usable?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to dispel a rumor, so asking that. And then I did see a social post, a social media post on a push to get season passes, and because of the work in the parking lot, how do folks go about getting season passes yet this week?
So there's other parking lots in Fanta Memorial Park, be along 19th Street, or if they wanted to park on Mulberry Street between 19th and 21st. I would recommend those areas and then kind of walking into the main building. They can also park on 21st Street or Douglas, but that's not as safe of an option, I guess. So there is those other parking areas around the park.
And I'll take a swing at operational update and things going on behind the scenes. And Todd, if I misspeak or you want to add something, go ahead and come up to the podium. Behind the scenes, we're working like ducks. We look like we're floating calmly on top of the water, but we're paddling quickly underneath. So we've got, our website is being finalized. We're putting together a rack card so people can have an understanding of what's offered at what times. For example, what's the schedule for water walking and what's the schedule for open swim? And you know, when is the concession stand open and all those good things? The staff is being trained. I believe there was an orientation today. And as I said, when I came to the intersection of 21st and Douglas, there are lifeguards in the water training. So we're staffed up. The concession folks will be trained this week as well. We have a number of communications going on with local photographers because initially we'll be using stock photos for the website and promotional pieces, but eventually we want to use Yankton people, Yankton folks having fun in our facility. So we have a number of conversations happening there. Brittany Orr and Sonia are working hard with the scheduling to make sure we have folks in place where they need to be, as well as special weekends. We have a swim meet coming up, I believe, the end of June. And we also have, you know, some holidays plugged in, so that's always a challenge for staff. Brittany LaCroix is working on trying to make the first week of operations as special as we can. So there are some special promotions, some giveaways. You know, we haven't, at least apart from a water plant, which everybody uses, but people don't get as excited about, we haven't opened a new facility. So one of the things we wanted to do is set the tone for the community about how exciting this is. And when you go to a new place, you get some swag, right? And that makes it a little special because you get your, you know, sunglasses or your, whatever it is, your tchotchkes, we call them in our house. And so we have some of those things planned because we want folks to realize this is something big and we need to celebrate the opening. So Todd, am I missing a lot? No. Thank you. So Saturday, of course, Commissioner, you're invited to come to a ribbon cutting, and we'll have some speeches and we'll have some special opportunities for press there as well. We do have things going on this week in terms of purchasing your passes. If you'd like to come and purchase a pass, and if you'd like to come to the open house and look around, that's available to you as well. Sunday is our season pass holder day, and it's not going to rain. And then Monday, it's happening. That's what engineering's been telling me. So it's happening on Monday, and we're really excited. So this is a fun time and a time where we should reflect on all the hard work that got us here. And I will guarantee you, it will not go perfectly, and there will be some things we can improve upon, just like when you go to a brand-new restaurant and, you know, your, I don't know, onion rings are cold or they forget them, or I don't know what can happen, but those things, you know, it won't be perfect, but we'll get perfect throughout the summer. And the most important thing is we're going to try to make it a great experience per the mission set forth by U9. So we're juiced. I don't know if that's the term the staff is using, but that's the term I'm using. So in that same vein, another thing I'm juiced about, I want to talk about to you, is the community knows that I have hired a new chief of police. So when we say goodbye to outgoing Chief Harris, we will welcome incoming Chief Jason Foote to join our leadership team. And we are working in transition, Chief and Chief and I met today to discuss transitioning. And in the next month, they'll be doing a few things together, but also sort of passing the torch. So Chief Harris explained it well today. You'll see him starting to kind of fade into the background, and you'll see Jason attending some more of the public-type functions, and that's what's appropriate. So we're fortunate that we have somebody local here that's been promoted up, so Chief Harris can help in that transition, and we're looking forward to seeing what Chief Foote will bring to the department, and we'll certainly invite you to the send-off that we give to Chief Harris. Also in your packet, and this is the last thing unless you have questions for me, I promise, there's information about citywide cleanup. We had a successful citywide cleanup. We had a good amount of product brought to the transfer station, more than when we did the voucher system, but not, I wouldn't say substantially more, I mean significantly, but I wouldn't say, you know, that it was shockingly more. Still getting the same feedback we got before. Some people said, oh, liked it better when you had a voucher system and we could do it on our own time. Some people have said, nope, don't like the voucher system. I want to put it out on the curb. And some people who said, well, we like to curb shop, so we want... Stop doing that. So I would like your feedback. I'm going to pull feedback from you. I can certainly make a decision, but I'd like you all to talk with the community and your neighbors and consider for yourselves what you think is best. I'm thinking about the possibility, you know, maybe it's an every-other-year type strategy. Maybe, you know, even years are something and odd years are something else where we do voucher or pickup. You know, we're flexible in that regard. So just if you'll send the feedback to us, we'll talk about it. We've got a whole year to decide, so. That's it, unless you have specific questions for me.
I am curious, for the ribbon cutting on Saturday, do we have to dress to get wet, or are we going to remain dry?
Well, that depends, I guess. There is no pushing or running. We have a code of conduct at the Aquatics Center, which I think, I guess, apparently we might have to run through with the commission, Todd, before they come if they can't behave themselves at the ribbon cutting. I wouldn't plan on getting wet, but you just never know. So I wouldn't put your cellphone in your pocket as outgoing mayor. Some people might know. As long as someone pushes me off the high dive, I'm good, but... Todd, do you have something you'd like to add? Todd might very well go in.
Fun?
Yes.
Good? Yes, it will be an open swim for the guests that are invited on Saturday. So invitations that we've sent out to donors and others, we'll do the ribbon cutting and we'll do first. The radio stations are giving away the first, so we'll have people going down the body slide and the tube slide. And again, if you remember, Dave Withrow and Officer Preston Chrissy did a challenge to see who would get to go off one of the high dives first. Dr. Dave Withrow won that, so that'll be happening that day. But when all that first stuff is done, up until 1 o'clock, please feel free, commissioners and others, we've tried to make it clear in the invitations, bring your families. It'll be an open swim after that. And then from 1 to 4 o'clock, again, Dive in Yankton did the fun drive, and we promised some private pool parties. So Stewart Elementary, 4th graders and their families are invited from 1 to 4. And at the middle school, it's, again, go back two years, but it's the current 8th graders at the middle school. They're invited and their family members. Again, it's a practice run-through for us to make sure, as Amy was talking about, guards are doing what guards need to do and concessions is doing what concessions need to do, and we can have a staff meeting at the end of that day to talk through what worked and what didn't work, which leads us into Sunday, which is going to be a season pass appreciation day. So anyone that has a season pass or wants to purchase a season pass could do that on Sunday. We would be open from 11 to 5. Again, just a partial day to give us another practice, soft opening, concessions, ticket window, lifeguards, any adjustments we made on Saturday. Did they work? Did they not work? Again, we know there's going to be kinks to work out on Saturday and Sunday. But yes, we want people to enjoy the water park in the rain on Saturday. Now, we don't know that it's going to rain, but it might be a little chilly. So good thing the water's warm. You'll get into your chin and that's where you're going to stay. But that's a normal Memorial Day. We've been watching forecasts for two weeks, three weeks, and it was going to be 75 and sunny, and yeah, now it's going to be 66, cold rain, and that's right.
I might be more of an into-my-shin, not into-my-chin type person on the Aquatics Center, but...
Again, those of you that camp, you know, this is Memorial Day weekend. This is going to be normal, and we're going to survive it, and it's going to be fun, so.
If the water is 86 degrees, you can just stay in.
Yeah, you just stay up to your chin, and that's where you'll be.
You don't really get excited till you, I mean, there's soft pretzels in the freezer. And when Adam showed me that, I was like, oh my gosh, it's really happening. He didn't bake me one yet, but it's going to be fun.
All right, any other questions for City manager Leon? I would remind her, you know, one person's trash is another person's treasure, so FYI on that and city cleanup. Okay, anyways. Okay, moving on to public appearance. This is the time and the place for anybody that's here from the public that would like to address the city commission on an item not on the agenda. Charlie's shaking his head, so we'll move on. All right. Onto consent, onto our consent items. Number one is a possible quorum event for the very subject we just talked about, that potentially could be city commissioners at the Huether Family Aquatics Center ribbon cutting, but no official commission action will take place. Number two is a transient merchant license, which is for Rock and Rumble. Number three is another transient merchant license for the Third on Third event. And number four is establishing a public hearing for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage license for South Dakota Publishing, doing business as Muddy Mo's. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval. Second.
Al, we have a double motion and a double second.
Black magic.
Hearing that all in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, on to old business. Item number one is a public hearing for the sale of an alcoholic beverage memorandum 21-101 regarding a public hearing for the request for a special events liquor license for July 3, 2021, from Rock and Rumble. Mike Sardup, president, doing business as Third on Third. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Oh, I can't second. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Al, roll call.
Can I find my button again? Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number two is a public hearing for consideration of memorandum 20-101 regarding a public hearing for the request for a special events on-sale liquor license for July 24 from Rock and Rumble, doing business as Rock and Rumble, looking at 3rd Street from Douglas and half-block east on Capitol, plus the intersecting Capitol Street. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. And I do apologize to the commission. I forgot one little step in discussion. So if I start moving on to a vote and somebody has something burning they want to say, I just made a big note that said discussion, so my apologies. I'll get used to it. First meeting, just like an opening of a pool. It's not going to be perfect. All right.
Since Jeff is here, Jeff, would you like to talk about your events this year? You're returning after a year off due to COVID.
You or Mike or Billy Joel or, there's three of them here in the audience, so they're out in full force. Maybe each one of you want to address a different, okay.
Yeah, they're going to actually go off the same as 2019 and the same layouts, the same lineups, where the stages are going to be and everything, so we're excited. We've got a lot of good feedback on it, and we just want to get things rolling again here. And Riverboat Days, or not Riverboat Days, Rib Fest is just in a couple of weeks off, too. So we've got three events coming in the next couple of months. It's going to be fun. Thank you.
Yes, kudos to all our event organizers who are putting events together for our community again. It'll be fun, just like tonight, seeing people's faces. It'll be fun to continue with those events. All right, moving on to number three, a public hearing for the renewal of a malt beverage license, consideration of memorandum 21-102 regarding a public hearing for applications for renewal of malt beverage licenses for the '21-'22 licensing period. They were, all of those businesses were included in your agenda packet. Can I get a motion? So moved.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Anybody from the public want to address the commission? All right, Al, roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number four, under old business, is consideration of memorandum 21-103 regarding a public hearing for the request for a special malt beverage on-sale retailer's license, a special on-sale wine retailer's license, and a special events off-sale packaged wine and malt beverage dealer's license for one day, July 17, from Yankton Area Arts. Looks like they're doing a location at the Meridian Bridge. Rain date will be City Hall Auditorium.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to address the commission? All right, Al, roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number five is consideration of memorandum 21-104 regarding a public hearing for the public hearing on a request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for nine days. Those dates are in your agenda packet, from Ben's Brewing Company, owner, providing services for music at the Meridian. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? I do see Brittany LaCroix, in her perfect timing, walked right in as we brought up the music at the Meridian as related to the alcohol beverage license. Brittany, would you like to step to the podium and give us an update on what all fun stuff you have planned for us this year?
I apologize for being late. We were at a kid's soccer game, so doing double duty tonight. Music at the Meridian, excitedly, is back on for this year. We are still down at the lawn, and it's going to look pretty similar to what we've seen in the past. We have nine dates this year. Because we had to cancel so many last year, we were able to rebook many of our acts from last year. So we have some Grammy winner, Southern Avenue. We have a lot of great acts that are coming. And we've also added local artists to our lineup, and so that's something that we are very excited about. I know our local musicians are very excited about. And so I'm working with them on how that's going to work, and they will be our openers from 5 to 6. And then our headlining act will start at 6:30 and will go until 8:30. You'll see Ben's Brewing Company down there, some local food trucks, and I'm working with Amy Bailey to get our mural back on for this year. So we weren't quite sure if we were going to be able to do that, but we think that we're going to be able to make it work and get that mural back up. So pretty similar to how we've seen it in the past. I'm really excited to get everyone down there and just be together and listening to some great music.
Awesome. Thank you. Yes, I'm excited to have it back, too. Even excited to do a mural again.
Perfect. Yes, me too.
I'm glad you got that incorporated as well. Any other discussion from the commission? All right, thank you, Brittany. Anybody from the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to new business, and pay attention, folks, because we got a lot of introductions to do here. We'll get through it. Number one is establishing a public hearing. Number one is establishing a public hearing in consideration of memorandum 21-117, an introduction and first reading, and establishing June 14 as a date for the public hearing to ordinance 1052 regarding medical cannabis that was just discussed this evening.
Introduced.
Thank you.
Before you go on, I just want to make it clear that the second reading, just for the sake of the record, will exclude the last sentence in section 13145A. That's the-
Which is?
The elimination of the obligation to create a one-directional exit. So the breezeway can be an entrance and an exit, following our discussion from earlier.
All right, thanks for that clarification, Russ. Number two is an introduction and first reading, and establish June 14 as the date for the public hearing for consideration of memorandum 21-85 regarding ordinance 1049, a rezoning from R2 Single Family Residential to be to highway business from 220 feet of West 700, okay, it's all in there, except for the KYNT addition. Can I get an introduction?
Introduced.
Thank you. We're going to get through this. All right. Number three is establishing a public hearing, an introduction and first reading, and establish June 14 as the date for the public hearing for consideration of memorandum 12R21-86 regarding ordinance 1050, which again is a rezoning from an R2 Single Family Residential to an R3 Two-Family Residential on lots on Summit Heights. Can I get an introduction? Introduced. Thank you. Number four, establishing a public hearing, which is an introduction and first reading, and establish June 14 again as the date for a public hearing for consideration of memorandum 21-87 regarding ordinance 1051, amendments to the City of Yankton zoning ordinance number 711. The proposed amendments are in Chapter 27, Article 2, Section 36, Part G, and Section 37, Part G, and would change the maximum allowable height of structures in the B2 Highway Business District and B3 Central Business District from a current 50 feet to 65 feet. Can I get an introduction? Introduce. Thank you. All right, now we're down to item number five, which is a Planning Commission recommendation, consideration of memorandum 21-88 and Resolution 21-35, which is a review of the replat of lots 4 and 5, and a replat of lots 1, 2, 3, 10, 11, 12 of Block 2 in Airport Acres, hereafter known as Lots 4A and 5A, all in airports, Airport Acres. Anthony and Patricia Benjamin trustees, and Tony and Pat Benjamin revocable trust owner. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any Commission discussion? Okay, anybody from the public like to address the Commission on this item? Al, roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number six is consideration of memorandum 21-89 and Resolution 21-36, which is a plot review of Whitetail Run, Dennis Christensen, President, and Deerfield Truck and Equipment Owner Company as owner, which would be then the location of the south side of the 300 block of West 8th Street. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any second?
Second.
Thank you. Any Commission discussion? Anybody from the public? Okay, Al, roll call.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. And the good news is, we only have six left. Okay. Number seven, Planning Commission recommendation, plat review for memorandum 21-90 and Resolution 21-37 in the Whitetail Run Development. Dennis Christensen, President, Deerfield Truck and Equipment Company owner, which would be the south side then of the 3900 block of West 8th Street. Can I get a motion? So moved. Second. Having a motion and a second. Is there any Commission discussion? Anybody from the public? Roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number eight, consideration of memorandum 21-91 and Resolution 21-38, which is a plat review of Lot 11, again in Whitetail Run Development. Dennis Christensen, President, Deerfield Truck and Equipment Company is owner. The location is the north side of the 3900 block of Buck Street. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson? Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number nine is consideration of memorandum 21-92 and Resolution 21-39, which is a review of a replat of lots 6 and 8 in Whitetail Run Development. Dennis Christensen as President, Deerfield Truck and Equipment Company as owner, and the address is 605 Deer Boulevard. Can I get a motion? So moved.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody from the public? All right, hearing none. Al, roll call.
Miner?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number 10 is consideration of memorandum 21-93 and Resolution 21-40, which is a plat review of Lot 15 in Whitetail Run. Dennis Christensen as President, Deerfield Truck and Equipment Company owner. The location is the south side of the 3900 block of Buck Street. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? You're on.
Charlie Gross, 1510 Burley. That's five motions, replats, et cetera, same address, different addresses. What's going on? The public doesn't know.
I'm very familiar with this, so I'll jump ahead of our city planner. It's a development out west of Deer Boulevard. All of those are lots within the same development. There are a number of buyers who are buying just little parts, or they're consolidating prior lots into one larger lot so they have, so they can get rid of setback issues. But it's all in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction west of Deer Boulevard, down the bluff.
So Ross, on this one we're considering now, is that going to turn into an RV Park 2? It's just kind of getting-
Sure is. It sure is.
Fit with everything else around there then.
Any other discussion? Anybody else in the public? Al, roll call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. And our last one, number 11, is consideration of memorandum 21-94 and Resolution 21-41, which is a review of a replat of Lot K2 in the east 158 of Parcel 2. And lots of descriptions there to be hereafter known as lots 1 and 2. Metz-Petersen Edition, which is inside Yankton County. Mark and Charlotte Peterson, trustees of the Mark and Char Peterson Revocable Trust, which is the owner. The address would be then 2804 West 8th Street. Can I get a motion? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none. Al, roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Abstain.
Miner?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. City Manager Leon, I think Mr. Gross brought up a good question, a good point, going through all of these individually. Is there any way we can streamline this within the city personnel to approve some of these easier replat reviews?
There is, and thank you for asking. Prior to the pandemic, staff was working with Mr. Denherter to work on an ordinance that would allow for what we call administrative plats, or what's known as administrative plats, or simple plats. So in these instances where there's not really anything unusual happening, and it's kind of standard procedure, you can by ordinance give Mr. Mingo, or give me, or my designee, who would be Mr. Mingo in this case, the authority to sign off on these. And yes, it does take us time to go through this as a commission. However, the real inconvenience is for the property owner, who has to send this, something very simple, through Planning Commission, and then wait for City Commission. And if the timing doesn't work out, that can be pretty inconvenient. So this isn't for, you know, if there's a new subdivision in town or something like that, that's not what this is for. This is for, you know, what we call simple plats. And there's a lot of different things that fall under that variety. But we're going to have Ross work on that ordinance for you, and let you take a look at it and tell us in a work session if you want to simplify this process for the property owners, both in the city and in our extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Great, thank you. I think that would be helpful, especially on some of these easier plat reviews and adjustments. Continuing on, item number 12 is an introduction and first reading. This is the City Commission acting as a Board of Adjustment memorandum 21-105, establishing June 14, 2021, as the date for a public hearing to consider a variance from the front yard setback requirements in a B2 Highway Business District on Lot 4, Block 1, which is the Walmart Edition in the City of Yankton. Address is 3007 Broadway Avenue. Jeff Coster, owner. Can I get an introduction?
Introduced.
Thank you. Number 13 is a sidewalk cafe license, which is in consideration of memorandum 21-107 and Resolution 21-42 regarding a sidewalk cafe license for 102 and 104 East 3rd Street, doing business as Mojo's Third Street Pizza. Can I get a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Dave, if I could have you address this, which is interesting, not necessarily read tonight, but in our notes, I'm hearing a word that came up when we first had Design South Dakota in town, and that word is a parklet. So could you share with the Commission and the public what this specific agenda item is asking for?
Sure. As you mentioned several years ago, when we went through the Design South Dakota process, one of the more exciting things that was developed in that planning process was the concept of parklets or boardwalk extensions. And we're, as a staff, really happy that we have our first applicant to go formally through the process of expanding a typical sidewalk cafe permit to include a boardwalk extension or a parklet. It would, with the permission of the adjoining property owners, it would take five parking stalls, and with the owner's construction of a deck sort of area or a boardwalk out into those areas provides seating, similar to what we see in our sidewalk cafe permits downtown now at other locations, but just in an expanded area. All with the goal of increasing activity in our Meridian District and making downtown a more fun and active place to be. So staff has reviewed the proposed sidewalk cafe extension or permit for this location from Mojo's and recommends approval. We've also done, the plan set has also gone through all of our safety protocols for review with stormwater management and construction and railings and all of that. And I might invite the applicant to comment further unless you have questions for me.
All right, you guys going to ick a bick a soda cracker? Or do any of you want to come forward and just tell us a little bit about your vision and what you're doing? Hey, it's Jeff. All right.
Well, it's basically just a deck that's taken up five parking spaces in front of Mojo's. And it's going to be something that should enhance downtown. I hope it enhances our business as well. We're here for the long run, and it's going to be quite a project, but especially with the wood going up the way it is, but since we first started it. But I think it's going to be worth it for our business and for downtown. I think it's going to be a real good addition for downtown. If anybody has any questions on it or anything, I think most of you have my cell number if you have any questions before the second reading, so.
Mayor Moser, I think Dave Mingo has either a question for the applicant or for a comment he'd like to make.
One other thing I just wanted to point out for the viewing public is this is a seasonal installation, so it will come out during the winter months. So we won't have any issues with snow removal or parking during the winter at the location. So the applicant has graciously agreed to remove it during the winter. So it's not a street reconfiguration, it's a seasonal installation.
We're actually going to build it like a tinker toy. So it comes out in sections that we can pick it up and store it behind one of my buildings downtown here, so.
So this will be a full service?
Full service, yeah. So it'll include the sidewalk, but it'll have the sidewalk open, but we have chairs and tables that are included in the designs there. And it'll be alcohol and food. And we've talked to all the different departments here and tried to work it all out. I'm sure there'll be things that we don't anticipate, but we'll figure it out.
Awesome. Any other questions for Mr. Mingo or Mr. Deha?
Like Mayor Moser said, this is something that really excited the public who participated in our Design South Dakota effort when we were looking at the downtown. So thank you for being the first to take the leap and try something different. And I know it's a lot of work, but hopefully it's also very cool and worthwhile.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, anybody else from the public? All right, seeing no movement. Al, roll call.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number 14 is consideration of memorandum 21-109 regarding a sidewalk cafe permit application for 103 East 3rd Street, doing business as the Walnut Tavern. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Having a motion and a second. Is there any Commission discussion?
Dave, is this similar to what they've done in the past?
Yes.
Any other Commission discussion? One-word questions we can ask of Dave? No? In the public? Anybody in the public like to make a comment? All right, Al, roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Schramm? I'm sorry, it's probably going to be a long time before he votes tonight. Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 15 is consideration of memorandum 21-113 and resolution 21-44 regarding a request by Rock and Rumble for a special events parking ordinance, number 933, to be in place during Rock and Rumble on July 24, 2021, and a suspension of the alcohol consumption. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second?
Jinx.
Having a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? Would anybody in the public like to make a comment? All right, Al, roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 16, consideration of a memorandum 21-114 and resolution 21-45 regarding a request by Rock and Rumble. Mike Sardup, president, doing business as Third on Third for a special events parking ordinance, number 933, to be in place during the Third on Third event, July 3, 2021, and to suspend, to have a suspension of alcohol consumption. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? All right, Al, roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 17, consideration of memorandum 21-115 and resolution 21-46 regarding a request by the Yankton Antique Mall Vendor Fair for a special events parking ordinance to be in place during the Yankton Antique Mall Vendor Fair, which is on July 24, 2021. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Having a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? None? Anybody from the public? All right, Al, roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 18, music at the Meridian Concert Series. This is consideration of memorandum 21-116 regarding music at the Meridian Concert Series. Just discussed a little bit earlier tonight. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Having a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? All right, Al, roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 19 is bid award of the 23rd Street project in consideration of memorandum 12-108 regarding a bid award for the 23rd Street from West City Limits Road to approximately 1,300 block of West Street and utility reconstruction. Adam, did you maybe want to address the commission before we make a motion? This is kind of a unique bid where the low bidder will not be selected. So maybe the commission would like to hear what happened.
Yes, so this project was advertised. We received bids during the advertisements. Two addendums were issued for changes in the project. The addendums did require the, a new bid proposal form that was drafted and part of the addendum. The low bidder failed to acknowledge either of the two addendums or use the revised bid proposal form. This bid was considerably lower than the second low bid, but after consultation with the engineering office and the city attorney, we decided not to award to the low bid, just based on the fact that they failed to acknowledge those addendums.
All right, so this bid award is for Holstein Excavating Inc. out of Edgerton, Minnesota for $835,695.
Correct.
Correct? All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? All right, having a motion and a second. Any other commission discussion related to this agenda item?
Just out of curiosity, since this is directly tied to the continued development of Westbrook, so the southern portion, just overall, how good are we feeling about continued development in the years to come for that particular area? And I suppose this also kind of ties into the volatility of, you know, the cost of materials nowadays.
Yeah, I think, you know, between Adam, Dave, and I, anecdotally, we can say there's still a huge demand for housing in our community. I think it's, you know, what's happening in the future is going to depend upon whether builders are willing to take the risk that they'll be able to sell homes once they build them with the cost of lumber and materials going up, and also just a shortage too of labor to actually get in there and do certain, build for certain parts of the home. But I think, I'm not a seer, but I'm thinking that probably that's less of an issue than the demand for housing really in our community. So I think as long as we continue to have the hundreds of job openings that we're told are available here in our community, that we're still going to see growth and opportunity for growth. So I think it's important that we continue to work with YIPG and others on making buildable space, buildable lots in our community. Dave, do you have anything you want to add with that?
You know, the good news is, is that developer interest in Yankton is still very high, just with the proposals that we see coming through for preliminary plan reviews right now. You know, additional phases in multiple family units are still moving forward this year, even with lumber costs the way they are. So surprisingly pleased that the developer interest is still as high as it is, even with materials costs the way they are. Also, a couple of months ago, you as a commission took action to amend the tax increment district out there so that the new base rate for the home prices is on a moving scale tied to South Dakota first-time home buyers, and that's going to help these situations also to make sure. This project is, there are 20 lots in Westbrook Estates where the TID increment will be able to apply to this project. So we're hopeful that those lots get built out pretty quick so we can start seeing increment come and stay in Al's office to help pay for this.
Any other commission discussion?
It's probably worth noting that this came in $94,000 above the engineer's estimate, but considering everything, that's reasonable.
Correct? I think anybody doing construction nowadays is seeing an increased price, unfortunately. Any other, any input from the public comment? Seeing nobody moving. Al, roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 20 under New Business is consideration of memorandum 21-111 recommending approval of the appointments of the mayor to the various city advisory boards and commissions. Those were listed in your agenda packet as far as what you all have been assigned to do or continued to do. Many of you keeping some of your similar appointments from the previous year, and then citizens from Yankton who have been placed on the boards. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Having a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the appointments? Anybody in the public? All right, Al, roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. And number 21 under New Business is a K9 replacement of consideration of memorandum 21-118 and resolution 21-48 for the surplus of the K9 Reno. This is to approve the purchase of, for a new K9 and an adoption agreement for K9 Reno to Officer Pekaric. Maybe before we make a motion, Amy, do you or Chief Harris or somebody want to address what all this means?
Sure. So Officer Kyler Pekaric has submitted his resignation. He's moving out of law enforcement, and we're sad to see that. He's excellent officer, excellent K9 handler. So we're helping him transition, and he currently has K9 Reno. And K9 Reno is on night shift with Officer Pekaric currently. And he's been trained specifically and exclusively with Officer Pekaric. In speaking with incoming Chief Foot, who has, as you know, a lot of K9 experience, it is possible to train a dog with a different handler. That exists, but it's not something that he would recommend for a number of reasons. One of them being is K9 Reno is mid-career, so to put an additional amount of training with another officer probably doesn't work. Also, K9s are not cognitive, high cogn, it's maybe high cognitive functioning as our other employees, so they can be trained, but it isn't always successful. Retrain with another officer isn't always successful. The other situation we're facing with our K9s is it's never good to have an officer resign or to have a K9 that we need to retire. But in this case, we have changes now with our laws with medical marijuana, and our dogs are trained on drugs now. Dogs are still somewhat usable, but we prefer, as we move forward with our K9 program, that we, they're trained specifically not on all drugs, but I guess you can train them so they don't sniff on marijuana, but they can still sniff on other types of drugs, dope or whatever the other names of drugs are that are out there. I just don't know. I just don't know. Anyway. So also, this dog isn't just a dog where we would take it